Sorry.
Good to go?
Yeah.
All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. At six thirty-eight.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, oh yes, sorry, six thirty-three. And we have a forum. To begin with old business. The first one is an emergency management update and Vivian is here with us today.
Yeah.
Okay. Gonna try to speed through this. Due to whatever Rob said. Uh, well, people can review that there. I'm sorry, let me see. So if you, you may or may not have noticed, I did not submit a monthly EMA report for May. Great upstream, did it to you as soon as I could. I did attend the main preparedness conference in Augusta. Write up a summary of that because there's resources. Discovered that will need for review for updating our emergency operating plan. Um, at that, a very important thing happened there. So we live in Oxford County. Allison Hill is the director. Of Oxford County Emergency Management. All. Of the local emergency managers throughout the state of Maine voted. Allison Hill Director of the Year. So that was huge. And then lo and behold, a couple of weeks later, she gets called up again. Because there's sixteen counties in Maine. And all the county commissioners. The top dog in each county. Voted her Emergency Management Director of the Year for the entire state statewide. So we are very fortunate to have her. I am so appreciative of referring her now. So that was a goal. Um. Sandra at some point had mentioned that I showed her a code or maybe. Submit for mileage reimbursement, like from home to office back, county quarterly meetings, the conference. If the board agrees that I should get mileage reimbursement, I will turn in the mileage. Uh, to Cameron for the last since I've. Last six months, so November to now, and that way it could be done in, in the fiscal year that it was used. Um. And so. Yeah. Then while I'm at it, I'll try, I'm gonna. Because I have to go back through. To get that mileage. Long story short, I'm gonna try to total the volunteer outage, not just mine, but everybody's. So that you got a, a good idea of how many hours it's gone into. In, in six months, roughly six months to. So that's, I would like the board to make a decision on that. Make it official, the mileage thing.
Cameron, question, um. I believe that it's in the budget that is going. To the town to vote on, but in the current. Budget, is there money available for mileage for people who are doing work for the town?
I, there's, I have mileage in my admin budget. I can also take it out of the trade too.
Okay.
Depending on how many miles it's got.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve mileage for. Emergency management. Activities, people who are doing things to. Do emergency management for the town.
I will say that.
Any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Is that a I?
Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I, and the motion passes, please.
Okay.
At your pace. It'll last.
Submit the mileage.
Fantastic, thank you.
Well, oh, the second thing is another money. There's been four in particular. Uh. Uh, EMA volunteers who have given a lot of time and I'm requesting a hundred dollars so that. I can get four twenty-five dollar gift cards to give to those of. All volunteers because they have gone above and beyond. In helping through this process.
Cameron, is there. Such money available? That's already been kind of set aside for volunteers or.
Okay.
Appreciation.
You can come out of my training. Cause we haven't utilized all the training till this year.
Okay. I will make a motion that it's one hundred total.
Total twenty-five dollars.
Okay. That we set aside one hundred dollars. Total. For gifts cards for volunteers. For emergency management activities.
I'll start that motion.
Any discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote.
Sally, I.
Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you very much because that, I mean, it shows a huge appreciation to them that they really deserve.
They certainly do.
Okay, so the town, so I forget which week. We now have completely updated, no more corrections needed, anything. Erica from Abco delivered the final version. Of an entire town's private public works. It's complete. So it's also, um, on a PDF file. I did not send it individually to all of you, but I did send it to Public Works, the library, Rescue, Fire, and Town Plurges. But we need that, we needed that map and we will use that map that is now. Officially completed in the emergency operating. Which certainly. Okay, so here we go, here, here's, um. I'm gonna wrap my head around this as best I can. The FEMA process, we are now at the point in the FEMA process where we have met the filing dead on. For the damage end notorious. So thank you Cameron for signing off on that today. He was gone all day, he walks in as a Cameron. We have to have this done by the ninth, today's before he sat right down and did it. Uh. All emergency protective measures and debris removal work has been completed. Now we're up to our permanent work. Which is roads and culverts. And that, we had site visits. Then that information went to FEMA CRC and said it's. I'm gonna just save you the trouble, but just trust me, CRC looks at the site inspections. The measurements and sent us back the cost estimates for repair. We had a recovery scoping meeting with FEMA and the mitigation guide today. I pointed out that. I thought the cost estimates were inaccurate. And why I thought they were inaccurate, so even though we have a kind of an idea, there's more to tap in there. But currently, as it stands right now, we would get a hundred and five thousand dollars. To cover those damages. That may change. It could go even higher. Okay, but just to give you a rough idea. Hundred and five thousand dollars without. Four oh six mitigation or four oh four mitigation, which I will explain in a minute. That being said. We're at the point where you, the board, has to get involved. And we have to get involved in the decision-making process and you're gonna say, well, what decisions do we have to make? And before I go further, we are kind of on FEMA daddy. Uh, so what I'm gonna do. Is ask that the board either extend this fifteen minutes right here, right now. And I'll give you a brief. Summary of what Cameron and I have been working on, looking at. And knows that, that you, the board, have to. Like start making these decisions, because they're big decisions. Um, so we can do it now. We could do it in the workshop, because we do have a workshop scheduled. Or you can pick another date. It's up to you, but we have another FEMA meeting next Thursday, the thirteenth, and some of this has to be decided. Before then, as best we can, and we don't come to a decision and you'll see why. By the whiteboard is here, ignore the information on the whiteboard, I didn't call any racist, I knew what we were. Cameron took a picture, obviously, we have that information. But, so that doesn't apply to what I'm saying, just that I'll use that whiteboard to explain. And it would probably take a half an hour for me, twenty minutes to a half an hour to explain. Public assistance. Public assistance with four oh six mitigation. No public assistance. And going with, uh, the state of Maine hazard mitigation. And I can explain that. But it needs to, we kind of have to have. Your input, your decisions before we meet with FEMA again, and I'm sorry, I just found out today. And I'm sorry, I didn't like, I couldn't give you a heads up before right now. I would. Honest. So, but we don't need to make decisions here in this meeting, we can take it to the workshop or we'll have this with the deadline. No, we have a workshop when this meeting ends, we can do it then.
Okay.
Or we can do it right now, so I mean, it's just up to you guys.
I think it would make the most sense to do it in a workshop later. Also, just for the people listening along, they probably wanna see what other things we're gonna attend to today. Thank you.
And the workshop is public.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Perfect. Uh, that's it then, well, we're in a workshop.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good call, Sammy.
Thank you.
All right, um, number two. Public restroom facilities. I asked, let's this, um. I asked at the last meeting that this be put on the agenda. Um. I believe that. For public restroom facilities in Buckfield. We have the library when the library is open. We have the town office when the town office is open. And when both the town office and the library are closed, there is the. Quarter potty at Crossroads, um. The recreation fields. I think that perhaps most people in town know about. These restroom facilities. As someone who spends a great deal of time downtown in Buckfield, um, I am aware. That. People, both residents of the area and people visiting Buckfield. Are. Not using those facilities, um. And relieving themselves in areas in town. Behind businesses, um, on the outskirts of the parking lot of the. Town office, the municipal center, um. I don't believe that we have. Members on the Economic Development Committee, am I correct?
There are members, but they haven't met long time.
So our Economic Development Committee is not active at the moment. It's my understanding, we want to encourage people to come into Buckfield, spend time in Buckfield, spend money in Buckfield. Uh, want to draw people to this area. If you're encouraging people to come to the area. Think it's important that you have restroom facilities available. Um. Discussion to be had, people are relieving themselves in public areas around town. Community members as well as guests to the community. Thoughts?
Uh. For discussion sake, I will make a motion that we. Pursue installing another quarter potty at the town office.
I will second that motion. Discussion.
I think it's not just, um, what you said, but I think it also ties into a matter of just human dignity and giving people a place to relieve themselves. When they're in a pinch, there's no public restroom available in Buckfield, there's left with no other choice. Saying, and it's not, I don't think well post. That there are, like in places where people are leaving themselves, there's no sign that says restroom located on Cross Road. But past that, even if there were with that person, then travel always. It's for themselves. So I hear this concern, I take it seriously. I know we've discussed this in the past, restrooms can be expensive. And also, sorry if this is a silly question, can you have a quarter potty outside your round? So see.
Yes. Yes.
So.
I mean.
I, I met with Kingston, uh, a week or so ago. And he was updating me on changes to. The law, I don't know a lot well, but basically if a quarter body is going to use for one to seven days. Code enforcement has to issue a letter granting. Amendment, including the town, which I don't currently have for Redfield or. Best field, so that's something I have to work on, so anywhere you install, install a portable toilet. Code enforcement is going to have to issue a letter saying that it's a. Because now they're really trying to. Curb people from utilizing temporary facilities as permanent solutions. I'm trying to make people realize subject systems. That's probably what I want to.
So there is a process that we. Need to be. Followed, um. At some point in this discussion, um. Peter and I may need to. Excuse ourselves from the discussion as local business owners, because I think it impacts us. Um, in a different way than other people on the board, um. Just for information's sake, I've. Printed out maps to give to people to try to explain where Crossroads is, so. We do that, yes.
Do we rent our turn and quarter buddies like most like?
Hundred thirty-five dollars plus.
Wouldn't it make more sense just fill them out in places?
There's a lot of costs associated with that, we'd have to look into it as far as what it'll take to be able to. I'd have to sit down with Kingston and find out what couldn't, couldn't be done, because he understands his stuff a lot better than me, and then. To go from there, um. Determine what that cost would look like for the town. And then also. Who's gonna click it?
Yeah, the, the maintenance, the upkeep of it.
Hmm. Right, that's what I found, especially, we've been really lucky, probably because our locations are kind of all the big fat. Nobody's vandalized. Either of the lots of big fat.
So people come and leave the one quarter parties?
Our quarter parties are empty every Friday.
Oh.
It's not empty, so we rent it and they come in every Friday and empty it a little bit. So I'm not sure about winter time, because I, I know people that feel dollars when it's cold, but I'm assuming that he doesn't think to keep. Stocking the freezing.
Central.
And then you also need to, you gotta get, if it's a permanent thing. You gotta consider ADA compliance as well. Need to do, so you're certain.
When I'm having pass a quarter potty, not that I might need to do. Other one, but not in the meantime. But I go to Lake State first lot, it's like the bottomless toilet.
Yeah.
Pretty permanent there.
That's about.
ADA by and spacious. I'm saying it would not be a fun job, but. Everyone's gotta do it, someone's gotta do it. To go, always gonna paint the toilet at my work and it's not fun, but. Somebody just get the same role, you gotta make it happen. Think it's. Human decency thing, it's a health concern, it's, yeah. That's all I think.
I just had a different question.
Yes.
We have a land use improvement policy, basically it says sunrise to sunset. So the quarter body may lock at night. Does it shoot me out the bottom of the gullet?
I don't believe. That they're locked at the recreation fields.
Oh. Me personally, I'm not gonna give somebody crap for.
Crap is true.
I do know in Paris, their quarter bodies at their facilities, they do well, because they have issues. And it's not just an issue of manuals, it's an issue of approach to them.
Well, and then. I, I can understand that, but what's not, like what's happening in other towns, stick to what's happening here. If that issue arises, we can certainly address it.
So information that might be useful. Would be legally, what. Options are available to us. And then. Once we know which options we have. We'd need to know the economic impact and the. Uh. Environmental. Impact of. The different choices. Is this something that the staff. Here is able to do, Cameron, or is there something that. We can help you with or help other people with to get this information?
I'm sure we can use some research.
So start with Kingston.
Okay.
We can do the first step, just to even find out. Before we, a bunch of time going off in a different direction, but what would be feasible.
Okay. And. Perhaps it's a situation where if. Um, people feel that we should have some kind of facilities more available in the downtown area that. We do a temporary option as we investigate something that's more long-term. Um, and certainly anyone in the community who, um, has any thoughts, ideas, suggestions. We would love them, yes. I don't know how to set this, or do we withdraw the motion until we have further information? That's my language here.
Right. You don't, so, yeah, you don't withdraw, would move to table it until a later time. Till more information is available.
Okay, so I move to table this issue. Until the next meeting. Where we will look at any information that is gathered between now and then.
Good second.
Okay.
She admits to you.
We, we'll come back to it at the next meeting. And if, if we don't have enough information, we can continue at all.
Don't say that, because let's make this. Change. Good luck.
Mm-hmm.
Good luck, okay. You said.
All right, we vote on this, call for a vote.
Sally, I.
Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I. All right, and the next item, building permit fee schedule review, we had talked earlier. Several meetings ago, um. About updating the fee schedule.
I didn't bring anything up for this meeting, I've given you a bunch of options and I think we really look out. Good.
Okay, so. Perhaps we could put this decision or this discussion. Off until the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll need to do my exciting review for details.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I apologize, do I need. A motion to table this until the next week, thank you.
Make a motion that we table this discussion until next meeting.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Is that a I?
Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I. The motion passing, for new business, we have the consent agenda, we'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda. As written. With a total of seventy-nine thousand fifty dollars and seventeen cents.
I'll send that to you.
Discussion. All in favor? Sally, I.
Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I, and the consent agenda passes. Next item of new business, town manager update. That's all you, Cameron.
So I know I did a meeting up there for, but there are a few things that I wanted to point out and make everybody aware of, um. Any reports finished, we tricked them up today, so we have them here, I'll give you some of the corporate story. But anybody wants them, we can pick them up. Uh, Senator Collins reached out to let us know that, uh, she's requested that our CDS, sorry. Congestionally directed spending proposal request. Uh, she's requested that it be, uh, included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five agricultural appropriations bill. Of course, you're funding your bike tools yesterday, so that's why it's agriculture. Uh, this is a critical first step in the appropriation process and once agriculture hopefully receiving funding. To replace all of the windows in the town office, uh. Friday afternoon, I received the notice of award recipients, the community action grant that we applied for. We were all rushing to get done at the last minute. Uh, the town of Buckfield was selected as one of the recipients, um. To go hand in hand with that CDS request, if we are, if we are successful in getting that funding from the federal government. This will, this will play a big role in. Uh, meeting the match and share, I think, so fingers crossed. I sent all of you an email to town, but just so everybody's aware, sure, everybody's heard. Weldon Lucas has resigned as a road commissioner and public works foreman, his last official day was May thirty-first. It's a big loss to the town, uh, but I also expect his decision to move on. Uh, for that said, I want to thank him for everything that he has done. They've done a lot of good work over the last few years, continue to work towards everything that we were working on to begin with. Uh. Especially now that we have all this stuff from the December storm, um. Some of that work like darn it, rude, darn it, yeah, darn it, that culvert, um. I, I'm probably gonna recommend that we sell that four foot culvert out, that's a huge project and. I just think he's responsible for it to do, uh. I have promoted Preston Birkel as a new public works foreman, Preston's been with us, uh, since high school. He's been through multiple road commissioners, highway foremen. He at one point was the only employee that we had in Public Works, so. I'm confident that he'll continue to serve the town well in this role. Uh, well, then. Uh, while then leaving, it also opens the road commissioner position. I know in years past, town manager has been the road commissioner in title and pretty relied on the road committee. I mean, we have that committee for a reason, we have a lot of experience there. My recommendation to the board was. Let's go back to that till we find a different option. Just so it doesn't just sit there unfilled. But that is up to you. Other than that, I have Buckfield rescue report and a library report posted online. I don't have a public works report for obvious reasons. And uh. Fire. Sorry, it's, yeah, we don't always have somebody here to get that touch. It's not like rest, right? But I'll get something for you, so we can update you on calls. Call what others like. And I'll put it in the next, please back there.
Any questions for Cameron? Thank you very much. For the sake of discussion, I'd like to make the motion that we. Appoint. Cameron. To the. Post of road commissioner. At least until time that. Interim, so we'll use the terminology interim. Road commissioner.
I'll send that motion.
Discussion, my first question is, is there anyone else who has? Shown an interest in holding this position? Right now? No. What would a person need to do? In order to? Put in an application or ask to be considered for this post?
Well, currently. There is no additional, there's no statement until if this next budget passes. Or commission.
Okay.
After the start of the new fiscal year, it's a stated position, show of over small. State statute outlines the responsibilities of the road commissioner, much of which. Highest treasurer are doing such as. Or in town manager, you directly decide contracts for paving and. Issuing payments, remember fourteen with. The warrants and all the spending, a lot of it is pretty much on the treasurer and town major anyways. Uh, the other primary responsibilities in. The road committee plays a part in this. Was the time I'm looking for, inspect the roads annually, come up with proposals for what? Road repairs are a priority. Ideally, it's been a while, I think it would be good for the road committee to create the roads in Buckfield, by grade, I mean, snap them. Assign them a. Number on numerical scale to kind of identify the worst of the worst. We asked, I mean, that's basically what a road commissioner does. Because he's even well, it was already called works for me, because it's already. There, it's. So it's just doing it for free, they can come see me and they'll pay it to you.
So currently. There is no stipend for this position. It is in the budget that will be going. To the voters soon. Um, if there is someone who would be interested in this position, they should. Get in touch with you to learn more about. Roles and responsibilities.
Yes.
And at that. Point, then their name could come to. The board and we could look at that further.
I think that um. So we can do a noun, father gives officially no statement, but um maybe after the vote, see if the budget passes, if you can, it's just. Close a little blur. Somewhere, just to see if we can draw up any interest for. We say if Cameron's laundry list of responsibilities exists already, but.
I think you're smiling.
Yes, question.
Wouldn't it be helpful if someone on the board wrote a letter to the or. And. Were temporary, even though I hear you, Cameron, saying. You know, you're already doing some of the paperwork as treasurer, it would still keep you from having to go on the road so on self workers. They are in the roads. Yeah, and it's, and and there's a lot of expertise, I went, you know, I was at that, well, let's go to. And I think I had even mentioned this to you, Cameron, perhaps in the meantime. Until a budget passes or whatever. That if there were five guys, five men on that committee. That they could even rotate through because they're all on the same committee, so somebody could pick it up for three months. And somebody could pick it up for three months, and someone could pick it up for three months, and it would stay consistent because they're a committee. So I think it would help if the board reached out maybe and said, hey, we need you to just kind of step up to a little backroom. Between now and then.
So I hear what you're saying, um. Do you, you typically attend the road committee meetings?
I'm still the last guy. Spoke with Jerry Wiley. Who I believe is the chair, right, you know?
Yeah.
And uh. He asked if I'd be interested in them calling a meeting, and I said, yes, it's just gonna, it's probably gonna be out, which even twenty third. Once everything's wrapped up, right? So we plan on having a meeting, so I can discuss the.
My thought is unless. Or until you change your recommendation, if your recommendation is that you fill that role in the interim. Uncomfortable going with your recommendation. Um, and then perhaps at the next road committee meeting, um. So we could. Do something in writing, or you can bring it up to the folks there and see if there's somebody that would be interested in that.
Yeah, I think it would be smart to give another person an opportunity, but yeah, if you're comfortable with the workload. Comfortable.
Until such time as we can find somewhere else. Maybe they want to be the animal control officer as well.
I know Spencer, I know Spencer's good, I don't know if I'm not up to the joke. But I know Spencer's planning on finishing up there. Somebody's gonna be there for now, until. I can meet with the road committee if somebody else comes in and they have a better. Power, but it didn't take very seriously on the meeting and. That will take place, or just.
All right, so we'll be scheduling a meeting and um. Perhaps we'll post on the town website. That that position. Is. Open.
We tend to agree on the third.
Was any other discussion? All right, I will call for a vote.
Sally, I.
Tyler.
Peter.
Sandra, I. Thank you, Cameron, for being our interim road commissioner. Till such time as. Qualified candidate. Steps up.
Well.
Number three, approval of the minutes of the May twenty first, two thousand twenty four select board meeting. I will. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the May twenty first, twenty twenty four select board meeting. I will second that motion. Any discussion about the minutes? All right. I will call for a vote.
Sally, I.
Tyler.
Peter.
Sandra, I. Minutes are approved. Item number four of new business, community resiliency partnership. The community action grant conditional award notification. Is this something that you would like to? Open discussion?
Yeah, I I just wanted to see if you had any questions, I included it in the. Which I normally don't do, if we're talking about it, unfortunately. We do have. I'll wait until you decide. So I have. I included copies of the notice of the award. It's leading to town, don't it? Twelve figure sheet for Buckfield. I did receive a follow up email from the state on asking me to. Agree. To accept it so that they can start working on a contract. Control that script, so we can just go over it like it's all sitting here.
Seems to accept the nomination.
No, still, this is a conditional award. Um, it's contingent on having a signed contract with them. Uh, the, we this may not have said it in here, it's because it can be a fifth round of funding is actually over. Oversubscribed, so they are using some federal funds to. Fund it, which means when they use. Federal funds to do several awards, there's a lot of paperwork, which, whatever. Um, so I I basically need to give them okay and say yes or no, and then they can start working on the contract itself. Done seven.
Could you clarify for us the action we need to take to move this forward? Like, for sure, for sure, the options.
So if I read this, hopefully you can make a, you can make that determination, uh. She says, congratulations again on your conditional community action grant award. As as mentioned in your award notification email, this was an oversubscribed grant round and we're utilizing multiple funding sources to make rewards. Your proposal has been selected for funding using federal energy efficiency and conservation block grant funding. Provided to the state of Maine by the US Department of Energy Flurps making sub grants to municipalities. What this means, and then we got a whole line of stuff here, um. You'll work directly with GOPF staff on all contracting, reporting and grant compliance requirements. This would be a reimbursement style grant, so similar to what we did in Drew Brook, where you did the work, we pay for it. We issued them an invoice, they'll pay us back. When the project is fifty percent complete, so it looks like two rounds of payments. When the product's fifty percent complete. They'll issue half of it, and then when it's a hundred percent complete, they'll issue the rest. Uh, so if this poses issues for your community, please let us know. Go for staff committed easing the federal compliance and reporting requirement burden on the city against and will assist your community damage process. A scheduled kickoff meeting and there where we'll talk, they'll talk us through the federal requirements and reporting processes. Um. Communities utilizing E C V G funding are eligible for up to eighty four hundred dollars in additional grant funds to support the administration of the grant. So that's good news, that's in addition to. The fifty thousand. Uh, and then she says, please respond to this email to confirm that you would like to move forward with this grant project utilizing federal E C P G funds. So that will be here.
So I will make a motion that we move forward. With.
Cause it will get bigger.
So you can cut and paste, so um. Move forward with the grant. Project utilizing federal. Letter salad funds.
D C P G. I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
So. I was um reading the part of those. A, the local match, is it? Understanding we pay like fifteen thousand dollars. Below ourselves, that's what we're contributing to the scratch, yeah.
That's what. Because the the twelve, the, to do the. The proposal was for the twelve works, that's phase one, wow, and I believe it came up to like sixty five and some change, so. We applied for the fifteen, she was the. Fifteen coming out of our, we just sent it, but.
And then we wouldn't have a timeline until.
This is.
Any other questions, discussion? To recognize some great work. Cameron, thank you. It's a big chunk of money for the town to do very necessary. Work. All right, for that, I'll call for a vote. Sally, I.
Tyler.
Peter.
Sandra, I. Clarifying question, Cameron, do you anticipate us needing to do anything with this before the next meeting?
Well, I have everything I need, so I have to respond to that.
Okay. Fantastic. Item number five, schedule special amusement permit public hearing. For the Bucket Grill and Pub. Um, we have a recommended date for this public hearing to be June eighteenth, two thousand twenty four at six P M, I believe that would be. A half an hour before the scheduled select board meeting. So I will make the motion that we schedule a special amusement permit public hearing for the Bucket Grill and Pub on June eighteenth. Two thousand twenty four at six P M.
Sounds like a.
Any discussion? Cameron, could you give us a little bit? Of information as far as. What this permit application is for, for anybody who. Is listening, who wants that information?
So we have a special amusement. Ordinance, and the bucket has to annually. Uh, provide this application in contract, because they serve liquor. Uh. His liquor license, we used to do the public hearings for both at the same time, however, state law, it's up, it's up to you all, but state law. Doesn't require that you have a public hearing every time his liquor license comes up. Uh, but we are required to have a public hearing for the special amusement permit. Um, it has some different dates on here, which I didn't think it's. Uh, after this meeting, no, tomorrow, um. Call send letters out to the, they're already drafted, check the basics, supposed to be the code enforcement officer sends it out, but they're already drafted, I don't need to drive here to mail all those. Other than that. If anybody has any. Concerns. Feedback, they're welcome to attend, we can provide written. Letters for the board, um. Pretty much.
Yeah.
Haven't had. There's been no official reported issues since I've been here. Nobody's come to me and filed a complaint about it, or filed a complaint with the code enforcement officer. Uh, so. It's just part of this annual process of. Following our rules.
All right, fantastic. Any questions, any other discussion? Um, on the screen, Cameron, is there anyone participating who may have a question?
Still lost.
Okay. Then I'll call for a vote. Sally, I.
Tyler.
Peter.
Sandra, I. And item number six, legal services proposals. I believe we have four proposals, Cameron.
Yes.
And would you speak to those, please?
So I put this on the agenda, not necessarily because I expect you to make a decision tonight. Our law firm did close at. Five P M on Friday, so we currently do not have an attorney. Um, however, we did receive four proposals, um, from four different firms. All of which I sent requests for proposal to record to, when I was looking at my search, I outbolted it, so any law firm could. Could make a proposal, but I specifically targeted firms that specialized in municipal law or had a. Division that focused on municipal law, I think that's important to figure out. Somebody that can focus on land use issues, like code enforcement, junkyards. Uh, employment law. Uh, things like that. All four of the firms. From what I've read, which I also, as soon as I get on my send, I'll value. From what I can see, have extensive experience in municipal law and represent. Everything from big cities like Portland and Auburn to little towns like Leeds and. Butchfield, I guess that's not very little, but. Uh. Each one has their pros and cons, in my personal opinion. Price wise, they're just quite a range. Uh. I don't think price should be the sole reason we go with somebody. I mean, we should go get geography, uh, especially if they're going to charge for travel, if they have to come here, how far are they going to have to drive versus, or if we have to go there, how far are we going to have to drive? As well as the little things like what are. You could have a low rate, but they can charge us fees for. Things that are just all done, so. Those are the areas that I think should consider as well as referencing language, the ones that I received back, I did send out. Finally, now it's the different towns asking about the individual term. Everything from all the firm that listed, all the show. Uh. So I'm trying to give you as much information to make a. Decision in the near future, do you believe that every one of them? Offered to come and speak to you to present the proposal or answer your questions, if you would like. That's totally up to you. Uh. One, one of the firms thinking the proposal offered. Up to five hours to meet with the select board and the town manager and the board committee, so go through files, just try to gauge where we're at with our. Our legal, the current legal issues, we don't really have them right now. Uh, Jack's office sent notes. A clean copy of the final deed for the cemetery, I just need to get one of the former cemetery association members to sign off on it, get it authorized. And. I'll record it because there's no sense in sending it back and turn it down to the company once. Uh. But so that pretty much, that was the last thing he had on his, his list of things to do, so currently. We don't have a legal. Outstanding legal issues that are on the road. Uh. But that's not the same. But remember, there's something else in near future. We can go over the summer issue that didn't.
So having gone through the information that you sent to us and um. This is really nicely. Played out, um, it's. Would appear to me that all four. Of the options um would. Are qualified and. Will meet the needs of our community. And so having said that, Cameron, as you. Talked with people and. Spoke with. Um, people from other towns. Is there one of these options you think would be best suited? For our town right now?
Well, I like them all, but. I mean, from a. logistical standpoint, yeah, like Augusta and Portland would be really far away. That's a lot of back and forth, I know a lot of legal services can be remotely. However, that's not to say I. I've done the, I've been to the board's office several times, you know, it takes a considerable amount of time out of my day.
And sometimes you just want to be face to face with your attorney.
The right, uh. The one that did stand out. On kind of all the bullet points was. Trapped in Mattson, I might have been pronounced arrest. One was, uh. Obviously, first point, again, we're talking legal services, I don't even go solely on first point.
Right.
Uh, one of the. One of the uh references that I got said that it, they made it a point to say that. Jamie likes to get to know his client. Just to me helps inform your relationship, which isn't all business, it can be a mold of box relationship, it costs more. I think. That drive. Legal, the lawyer you feel sometimes can be a little. Can play a part and just, I don't know, that stood out to me, but they're located in Auburn, so it's only. I mean, we're currently, our current attorneys in Auburn, Boston's just across the bridge too, which I can believe for us. Brandon Isaacson there in Boston. Um, but. Again, their rates are considerably higher. Per hour. Uh, I mean. Not a requirement, it's it's fixed, so as we need them, we can pay the hourly rate, but and then. Some of them were a little bit more complex, like you got a lead counsel with Brandon Isaacson, but there's seven attorneys that are in the public sector, so depending on which. Which issue you're going to be working on. You might be dealing with a different attorney. Uh. It's kind of hard to. I don't say build a relationship with the town, given when you're bouncing between attorneys all the time, depending on the issue. I don't, uh.
It we're, we're entering into a business relationship, we're not getting married.
Right.
So.
And I haven't met any of these face to face either, so. Uh. That could play a part too, again, looking at the facts and the R P that we put out, it was pretty cut and dry, uh. Our primary. The evaluation should be on experience and qualifications, I believe all the attorneys need to experience qualifications, understanding of municipal legal issues. And the town specific needs. We haven't had a lot of serious. Legal issues, knock on wood, in the last few years, but I mean, in years past, we've had issues with junkyards. Yeah, issues with. We had land, land usage, we've got, like, that ball on that kind of, we've had employment issues, uh. Again, looking through all the proposals, I think. All of them are first in that. Uh. Approach to providing new service, that's where the getting a new client comes in. That's why that stood out. And then the fee structure, cost effectiveness. I mean. If they're having a paralegal draft indeed at nine dollars per hour. Versus having a paralegal draft that you get a hundred and one dollars per hour, four hundred and fifty five dollars per hour. Depending on how much legal assistance we need, that can add up.
Do you see it as? Anything could happen, do you see it as being problematic for us not? To have a lawyer between now and the next select work meeting, could it be, yeah, okay.
But don't listen to me.
Yeah, but now that you've said that.
I know if something came up, I could, I'd be able to call one of these firms and be like, we need a lawyer, and some nurses went through it with everything they went through at the time, they didn't have an attorney. We've obviously, they took the time to respond to us. Uh, if something serious came up and we needed an attorney. They would think it would be like the end world, oh my God, we need to tell those people that, hey, you're big. Guess that's what I was trying to say. But I don't foresee any issues that really arise in the next two weeks. That would require you to hastily make a decision without. Making sure you thoroughly looked at everything. You might see something that I didn't, there's a lot of pages of those four. Proses.
Is there information that you would like to have before making a decision? Would you like to meet? All four law firms, would you?
This is all territory to me, so I, I mean, we've done the same apparently for. Go on, Tom. This. What, what makes you feel, would you like to see them face to face and kind of draw up a, I mean, wars or? But I mean, I, looking through this, I mean, if I was in your shoes. I kind of, I would already have my mind made up, but.
The first one, yeah.
So for the sake of discussion, I will make the motion that.
Tell us you read this.
Oh, I can't, so I'm trying to figure out how to, um, I will make the motion. For Cameron to move forward. In, how do I, how do I word it? Contract, entering into a contract. For services.
Entering into an agreement for legal services.
Entering into an agreement for legal services with Traptan, Matson, Volu and Frenet L L P. Wait a second. Thank you, um. I worded that the way I did. So as you move forward. Cameron, if in talking. To people at this firm, if for whatever reason you don't feel comfortable. I would ask that you not sign anything and come back to. The table. Uh. But I, I don't. They check all the boxes, they're the closest, um, the hourly rate. Is best for our budget. And. If I'm talking to them and you feel comfortable. You're the, you're the. Point person for this, so. Um, those are my thoughts, what do you think?
No, well, it seems like Turner likes them, yeah. Yeah, like one thing the startup meeting was that they're so close, but also that they represent communities that are much. Similar feeling, obviously, I'm impressed by our reference from the city in Auburn or in Portland, but I. Don't know that we need that shelter if. We were saying so. But it's kind of large.
Mental, those, those big cities and big city levels, I mean, not to say we don't have little city, but we're a little town though, but, um. I feel like. That's a whole lot of inherent for a lot of.
Which is that, that they're currently working with some of our neighboring communities and we all have similar challenges right now. Um, other. Questions, concerns, I would call for a vote. Say aye to their end.
Peter, aye.
Sandra, aye. Thank you very much, motion passes. Okay, moving on to other business. Do we have any other business today? Okay, the board sets aside at the fifteen minutes at the end of every meeting for a public comment. This would be the time available for public comments, if anyone. Has any information they'd like to share. No one online? Okay. Seeing nothing, I move that we adjourn at seven thirty six. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Peter, aye.
Sandra, aye, and we are adjourned. Why don't we take? Five to seven minute break before we move on to the work clock, which is also, um, will we be? Zooming out as well, Cameron?
Yeah. We've got to do our section, you can move out.
So let's say quarter, aye?
Uh.
I. So we are beginning our emergency management workshop.
Yes.
And Anne is going to lead us through this as she is our resident expert. Our resident expert compared to the other people in this room, you are the most knowledgeable. And Cameron's a close second, so the four of us need to be educated.
Okay, so.
Tell us what we need to do, please.
Here's. I know you're gonna wanna interrupt me and ask why. I'm gonna do a whole way. Do. Picture on the board. And we get into the mountain road. So right now, what we've been working on. Is called P A and it's through FEMA. P A, they will reimburse us. The money for damages. Which is that hundred and uh, I mean, hundred and five is right now. They have a second program that you add mitigation. Which is four oh six is. Four oh six mitigation. Then come over here, you have a state of many. Which is minimum. And they have H M A, just just hazard mitigations. We have to collectively decide. What is the best approach? For not just fixing our damages. But fixing them in a way that is not repetitive damage, so. I'm gonna use fonts role. Font's role washed down in May, washed down in December. So we spent that amount of money, I'm gonna estimate close to fifty thousand dollars in less than six months fixing the road. Under FEMA P A. We are getting reimbursed for the amount that we repaired the road back to pre storm. Condition, and that is it. Okay? We also, there's sponsor, there's purpose and there's dark road. So right now. Earlier, I had sex, also talking about Casey, anybody listening?
They were watching on Facebook.
Okay, so I did, I did the right range. Sorry about that. Um, lost my place. Right now, the debris's done, the emergency protective measures done, and so we're into what we call the permanent work category. Permanent work. That is on uh, purpose road. Dark code. And then we have another project titled purpose Benson, which basically covers. Other things on purpose road, Benson rolling all roads. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So at the. Conference and after talk, go into the workshop and then having a virtual Mima. Uh, Heather Dumas is in charge of Mimas H M A. So Hannah workshop, she was with us for now, it's morning, uh, cause Amber from Oxford County was here. Eddie Gavin was here. This is. Options. Right now, we could option number one. Go with FEMA. And just. Get reimbursed. For what we've done. And do nothing else. Or. We could. Get reimbursed and potentially. Try to get hazard mitigation. So this is, anything here is seventy five. Can you read this twice five? Am I doing it wrong? Fifteen, seventy five, fifteen and ten percent. So this is the town here. Sorry, I'm standing in front of you, but there's no word. Uh, this is.
Percent is what? So seventy five percent.
So this is Feds.
Yep.
State.
Good.
Town.
Thank you.
Okay, this is seventy five. State. Kind of that, but it's through state and a twenty five. Town. This does not include, for example, design engineering. This does. This, oh, this, by the way, is four oh four. That's four oh six. So. I asked today in the FEMA meeting that followed directly after, so nine to ten in FEMA, ten to eleven thirty to FEMA. If we're being reimbursed. For pre storm condition and that pre storm condition had included. An engineer's report. Specs, whatever, why isn't that being included in their reimbursement? And he didn't know, it's an ongoing, you know, ongoing question, we'll get more information. So I can't answer, you know, I can't tell you a lot of them. But with this, design engineering is included, like maybe a one to two month turnaround. If you go, if we went with this. And Cameron, do you remember about? I'm gonna look it up, how much, like twenty seven, thirty something thousand dollars to replace once wrote again?
Uh, well, it doesn't seem to be.
Thirty five, okay, let's just call thirty five. And it can wash out. If you choose to just go with. This and not do anything else. Okay, that's one option, and if the road washes out sometime between now and winter or next spring. We start this process all over again. So we have, let's say it's thirty five. And thirty five, this is K. Right, or seventy in in less than six months, seventy K that we've spent on just one. Yes.
My fault was I misunderstood, so to your credit, or yeah, you were in the, around twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Thirty five was to a little bit. Without any.
Oh, okay, but, alright, and this is just an example. It's just an example. Because here we're only paying attention, but are we really? When we keep refixing the road. Go ahead.
Um, so two questions. So we have four. This money goes to towards four roads, is that correct? Four road projects?
Three.
Three.
Two main roads, darn it, road, purpose road, and just call it all roads.
Okay. So. Do we have the figures? The first one being what it will cost to get those three roads back to where they were and then. What it would cost to get those three roads where we ideally want them to be.
No, we do not, because FEMA does not pay. Or contribute. Or assist in designing and engineering. Two. Uh, you know, our road commissioner, home workshop inside. There hasn't, you know, Cameron's on it now, he's gonna have a road committee.
Okay.
But we don't have those estimates, and we also don't. Have estimates for permitting. So we know that. I'm gonna just put P for purpose and D for darn.
So where did that one hundred and five thousand dollar figure come from?
This? This is what FEMA right now is going to reimburse the town. For the work on. Purpose, darn it, and all roads back to pre storm condition.
So they're saying that amount is seventy five percent of what it will cost us.
No, this amount is the seventy five. And I, I think, I did. There's seventy five percent, the state's fifteen, we may have to come up with ten, or I could, you know.
Hundred and five is costing the entire project and then you seventy five percent, that's what we.
Oh, so we don't get a hundred and five from FEMA, we get seventy five percent of one hundred and five.
Like ten thousand five. Sorry.
But the town has already paid for a fair amount of this, correct? We've repaired, I, font road is repaired.
That's it.
Font road is darn it road, we haven't, we've got anything. Purpose road, we haven't.
South Wiggins.
So. That darn it.
We've probably paid over ten thousand dollars. So far.
Oh, you, you, we've got all the calculations in the workbooks, we spent all, I mean, well. What we've spent and what FEMA allows for certain costs is way.
So we've already met our ten percent, we're not looking at spending more money if we go with this, cause we've already, correct?
Uh, darn it, so. To give you the. The bigger picture on darn it is that's a moderate crossing by state.
Yeah.
So when she starts, when she's talking about permitting and and like. We are not quite sure if we're gonna, FEMA says like for like, we're gonna restore it to its previous condition. What happens if we go to the D E B and say, hey, we need a permit to do this work, and the D E B says, uh, no.
You have to upgrade.
You have to, and not just upsize, they may want a similar structure to what we have on Fair Pond Road. Well, we know that cost us over a hundred fifty thousand dollars last year, thirty five grand doesn't cut it. But.
Right.
The answers we've got from FEMA.
So when that came up in the meeting today. They're gonna look into that. Because. The main state laws have changed, so who trumps who? Does the Fed trump the state or the state trump the Fed? Or can that, we don't know yet, but what I do know is that. Um. This has a very specific deadline from from the date of declaration to June ninth. And then to to buy something, and then we have eight, only eighteen months to finish it at work. Now, we only currently have to go at work. And Cameron said in the meeting. That darn it road culvert is on a blue string, meaning. There's salmon, trout, allies, and something else, so we do have to have an H and H, which is a hydrologic. Hydrodynamic. Water site, um, and have to have D E P licenses, it's gonna be very involved. And that's why I did agree with Cameron, we talked about it earlier, that that should be contracted out. But there, but FEMA doesn't help with any of that, Mima does. And with Mima, even though we're paying twenty five percent, I don't know how much design engineers cost. So if we go here to darn it road and they say we, we need all these permits. Plus the design work, that's out of our pocket period. Whereas at least the design work over here is paid. Does that make sense? The other thing is, we only have eighteen months to get all this work done. The glory of this, in my opinion, very biased, I don't think it's better. But Heather was great explaining it, you have. Three years to complete the work. If we committed to using hazard mitigation through this program. Uh. We could phase it. So. Next year, before the budget is forming and the road committee leaks. The road committee could say, geez, you know, just like the annual town report says in the public works section, how many culverts they replaced. That could all be put in as projects through this program. We talked about the generator that's not available at the library or public works and having to deal with that during the storm. This covers generating. Uh, let's say that we commit to a fifty thousand dollar project. You know, we're gonna replace maybe two culverts on whatever roads that are chosen. And then all of a sudden, we have another storm and we need that money for instant emergency repair. We can put this on hold. And then literally we'll be trapped by the state as pending, holding. And pick it back up. Say when we get more money, so on and so forth. So we can go back to it. The other thing about. Even though this would be, you know, what we're doing is getting our roads back, which makes it safe and it's all good for the community and. You know, law enforcement, fire, rescue, public work, so on and so forth. We are covered under Oxford County Emergency Management's Hazard Mitigation Program. So if we were to look at that plan right now, we could see that we got completed projects, but there may still be some off seeing. The way I'm understanding it and doing it is that we go this way. We're then into the next five years based and coordinated with Oxford County. Now. That's maybe too far into the lead space that is. So this is, I'm gonna draw this circle, I did this for Cameron, this is, I'm gonna give you a clear cutting. This is, this is darn it. And it crosses the darn bro, darn road cross darn road down. Uh, this is a culvert. And within twelve to fourteen inches, this is forty eight inches. This is forty eight inches. These culverts, they're about twenty feet long. Oh, within fourteen feet. Fourteen inches. There's a second. Twenty inch culvert. Now that's where I pointed out in the FEMA meeting, they only have the cost estimates, us taking up this forty eight inch. You cannot take up the forty eight inch without moving this twenty inch. And so they're gonna redo that. But let's just say that here's darn it. And we wanna upside it to sixty, a sixty inch. Or. As Cameron said earlier. Like shed hollow is a half round culvert, if you will, but it's kind of like a bridge, looks like this. Where water is running through here. Or we have a bridge. If we were to to do four oh six. Try to get it upgraded to the sixty. Again. They're not sure if we can upgrade to sixty, but you know permits. I think from the state's aspect, and one of the emails Cameron and I received said, don't wait on FEMA, start at work now. And that you can replace a culvert, but a lot, but I'm still working really hard to find out if we can upgrade. One size. Or thirty percent without any permitting. I don't know yet, so, but going back to this. Uh. We. We could replace, let's just say we're gonna replace the forty eight with the sixty. Then. We have a bad rain and maybe we just start to wash out here in here, we can go to here and say, you wanna. We can go to here and say, you wanna put cement wall, we wanna put wings on this culvert. And that's hazard mitigation. So that would be its own project. Here we have three distinct projects, that's it. Over here, we can submit as many projects as we want and phase it out over the years. Um. And. Uh, face on work and if there's an emergency, we can stop it, wait the money comes. Uh, it is twenty-five percent, I'm just checking. So what Karen and I are trying to do is leave together, what are the best options? How will we save the most of our money? How, how will we stop repetitive damage so that again, I mean, because a hundred and, uh. Five thousand dollars is a good chunk of change, it doesn't have to come out of tax payers. You know, you don't have to raise and appropriate that money. And so I, so. Uh, for an advanced assistance application, please complete the following tabs. Um, Cameron, you know, I printed it out, I briefly looked at it. Um. Yeah, we would need the board's approval. And a letter of, kind of a letter of commitment to get started, just to, to get started. But we have to decide, do you wanna just say, you know what? Cameron's out of it, he's done the ballgame because he is completely buried. I'm out of it because I'm out of the ballgame, I'm completely done. What's the, what do we do? It's an emergency. Yep, hey, you know, it's happened before, let's just go back and do it the way we've always done it across our papers, well done next. Right? Or we can keep messing around. There, no, why is there? Um. The four oh six mitigation, adding four oh six mitigation to this PA is completely difficult. Um. Karen may have a different opinion, but. Uh. You can bunch this up. Saying that we go, go this way and we put this culvert back in exactly as it is. And six months later, washes out again. We would have to do this, we could still go for four oh six mitigation because it's. So we'd have to wait until this gets damaged again before we could use this if we wanted to put wings on it. It'd have to be completion damage. Yep, just ask.
Does it have to be? All, so could we use FEMA funds for one of the three projects and MEMA? For the other two or something like that?
Yeah, it's kinda like the alphabet soup of all those acronyms, um. But you can't use both on the same project. So that's why earlier I said, here's FEMA four oh six mitigation. And if we use that, we couldn't use this. Unless of course, whatever we did here got completely wiped out by storm. But the goal here is to take your roads for the next one to two years, your whole picture. And combine it with your repairs if you can, so that. You're stopping that repetitive damage fix, damage site.
So maybe help me out with this, Cameron. My understanding is, the way it looks is that Fonz Road has already been. Brought back to what it was before, so that's already happened.
Yes.
So if we use FEMA money for that. We, we'd get money and then if. When it washes out again.
Oh.
Then we go MEMA, cause it's already done.
Yeah.
So. Let's get, get the money for it and then.
Could always apply for, for Fonz Road later on. Fonz is not a big concern, the big concern now is purpose road and darn. Do we take the recommended cost analysis that FEMA gave us of thirty-five thousand dollars and. Maybe, we have to fix it before they'll give us any money anyways, but.
Is your recommendation? That we do. It's a lot more work, do something different to both of those projects? Or just, is there one of them that we're gonna do this big change on?
So on roads and culverts, Viv, Viv and I talked about this today.
Yeah.
We have eighteen months to make these repairs, the damages have already been identified, they're there. We have up to eighteen months and then we can file for extensions, so. But. With that said, maybe meeting with the road committee, maybe they have some suggestions on. My biggest concern, and without getting on the phone with DEB, I don't even know if we call it DEB, uh. My worry is that we get there, just like Viv said, we could just pull a culvert, do the work. Contract it out, have it done, roads fixed back to what it was before and in six months could walk out again. Or we could do the research and find out. A, is DEB gonna allow us to?
Build it back in the same.
Build it back in the same, or are they gonna say, no, we can't do that anymore? Or are they gonna let us upsize it to sixty? If they do let us do that. Then we need to go back to FEMA under four oh six, cause that would be four oh six mitigation, because we're upsizing. So then we'd need a whole new cost analysis or cost, what do we call that? It's cost.
Cost estimate.
Cost estimate.
So with the three projects, one. As of, of the three areas of damage. One has been fixed.
False.
False. And the other two?
False.
Nothing.
And there was a second culvert that washed out of our last pick.
Yeah, it'll collapse. Press them to move it to replace it.
Oh, yeah, it's all fixed.
Long day off.
So. The other thing about this is. Um. Heather. Heather did say that she could come, show the no way and potentially present for. And I'm telling you, she'd do a way better job at it. Um. I don't believe that we're committing ourselves to anything by filling out the application. Um. We would have to pick, we might have to pick the project or a project.
So what's to do, what's?
So in other words. We could do FEMA, could be purpose, MEMA could be darn it, vice versa. You know, we don't have to go all or nothing on either one. But we can't use both monies on the same project as mine originally. Um.
And, and what are, what are the first deadlines that we need to meet?
Um.
We can float, I can float this purpose and darn it thing, I don't wanna say float, I mean, we have these meetings, we go to this meeting, we have nothing to report. Um, but. Darn it is my number one priority as far as the one that concerns me the most. Purpose, I don't believe is gonna be an issue unless we wanted. To take mitigation steps to prevent it from happening in the future. Darn it's my concern because of everything that I discussed, but also when Walden was here, he had Alex Abbott come in, who's a stream.
Yeah.
Specialist consultant, he was the one that was consulting on the whole Drew Burke project, and when he looked at that culvert. His unpaid opinion and his experience was that they were gonna want. A box culvert put in there, which is a lot more money than. The thirty-five grand that they're, they're proposing, and actually their mitigation team. Had put that as a mitigation option under four oh six as well. Uh, right, I didn't get that back, it's four oh six is during the PA, plus this four oh four without the B I. Uh. Cause they had a mitigation specialist go at the same time that they did the site, and they drafted up what they proposed, the mitigation that could be.
They didn't give us an estimate.
Right.
It's because they don't pay, so that was another thing that came up today was where's, where's that? It's a lot, it's a lot, I understand, and.
With, with four oh six, basically. If it was gonna cost us thirty-five thousand dollars to replace that culvert back to its current, for our pre-storm conditions. Yeah, forty-eight inches as it was, they're saying their cost estimate's thirty-five thousand. If we went with a mitigation under four oh six, they'll pay up to a hundred percent.
No, can't go over.
You can't go over a hundred percent of the initial damage, so thirty-five was thirty-five, you get seventy thousand dollars. I would, I think the difference, they could not replace that culvert, or they'd box culvert, seventy thousand dollars.
Right, can. And in addition to that, I mean, two different things I want to. Box culverts are not necessarily the best way to go. And that came from Fred, Oxford County and also upstate.
It's a lot of miscommunication, mixed messages from MEMA and FEMA and mitigation.
Yeah.
PA and it's, it's so frustrating to navigate. MEMA says towns have the discretion to replace culverts as they seek it, no permits required.
Which we did do on darn it road, but because this is.
It's that red dot on that crossing, downstream. Supposed to say we do it and the state shows up and now we're.
Yeah, and if we, so. And made permits and didn't have permits, we could be fined a thousand year dollars, the town. So it's a lot, it's a trial.
Uh, how do we get? So if, if we take the MEMA FEMA. Out of the pictures. Okay, we have two road projects that need to be accomplished. And there's minimal, what could we do minimal, and then there's the optimal.
Okay.
And, sorry, I forgot. If I would want to know, how much does this cost and how much does this cost? And then it's a simple matter of looking at. This will pay for this much, this will pay for this much and just doing the math. And also looking at which may be the easiest. So without. Without. Having those. Without having the amounts. Without knowing what is the, because if we're going to improve. We should do it. You know, do it the right way. So what is that, what kind of cul- culvert, how much would it cost?
Okay, so I did wanna reiterate, so. Regardless of which one you go with, you need a design, you need an engineer's design. They will not pay for the engineer's design. The cost estimate of the project is based on its son.
We don't need an engineer designer for this call.
Not.
It's video, right, that's what I can get now.
Uh. Yes, if we replace it with a forty-eight inch, yes. Yes, I'm talking about ego.
So, so darn it road, if we didn't have any of this going on, if this was just, there was no money available, Buckfield has to fix it. What process would we do to? Learn what would be the best way to fix it?
You'd have to go get all the permits, you have to get design, an, an engineer design.
Well, prior to May thirty-first, I would call Walden and say, can you call the DEB and find out? If or what we need for permits. So now I guess that's me, I need to call the DEB, but there's a lot of phone numbers of the DEB and I don't remember cause, maybe I just like, well, find out if you can. Cause I can call them and they can say, you know, we need permits and I. Do it.
So we have to find out what we need for permits, but. Let's say we find out what we need for permits, then what do we do to find out what we have to do to fix darn it road?
Well, again, that's what I said, I, Viv mentioned it too, this is a project, it's gonna be something that I don't have the manpower to do it with.
Right, so we have to hire somebody to come in and tell us what needs to be done.
Have to get free cost estimates.
Well, we have to go through the R and B design process.
So we have to do that, whether we pay for it or it comes out of FEMA or it comes out of MEMA, right? That's what we have to do in order to fix the darn it road?
This is what Heather suggested.
Big question is, are we focused on mitigation or are we just focused on? Getting it back to where we're at.
Well, I think on darn it road, the big question is, is can we just replace it, right? I mean, is the state, the DEB gonna require us to do?
Permitting's the biggest question that nobody has been able to answer us that we've dealt with so far.
Correct, and I can try that again, what Heather suggested is you make a list of the PA projects, you made a list of the mitigation projects. You look at the whole list and you write one, you, you have to be able to verbalize two sentences for each project. And then you look at what, what your deadlines are. And then how much money do you need, that's the other thing, um. As far as I know, we have no money in the proposed budget. Or even the ten percent, we have that ten thousand five hundred, yeah.
But if we look at the fact that Fonz Road is already done, if we put in for FEMA for Fonz Road. Let's say Fonz Road costs twenty thousand dollars. Let's say it costs us twenty thousand, we've already done it, we've already paid for it, it's finished. So now we say we put in for seventy-five percent of the twenty thousand dollars, right? So now we will get fifteen thousand dollars back. From FEMA plus another fifteen percent from the state. For Fonz Road, which we've already paid for, so now we have that money.
Yeah, I'm confused as to it, it's the way I'm working, baby, I'm fired.
I've never been more confused than working with the federal government, so.
When, when do we have to make decisions? On whether we're going FEMA or MEMA?
I don't, I don't want us to drag our feet on this, I mean, I'm saying I wanna get it fixed as soon as possible if you go down darn it road, I know you've probably been down there, it's. It's folded up right now, but that's not to say we have one bad rainstorm in that road too, I mean, it's not the. I don't wanna say it's not the end of the world, we could shut that road down at that culvert, through traffic could get to their house, they'd have to make the detour around Shedd Hollow. It wouldn't trap people like Fonz Road would.
And it's hard to watch out for sense.
Yeah, so from the, from the FEMA perspective, on this pro, on these projects. We have eighteen months from when we applied for PA. To get the job, to get it done, or we can file an extension, and I think they issued sentences at six months ago or something.
I think so, so you're talking June, July of twenty twenty-five and ask that it's completely done or file extension.
Well, I would say we start as soon as we can, but what are our deadlines to decide whether we're applying for FEMA or MEMA? Right, is, am I making sense here?
Well, the longer it takes to decide which way we should go with project. The longer it's taking to start.
But I think we need to find out what the options are, I mean, if this one costs two million dollars and this one's a hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna. I, I know I'm exaggerating.
No.
But how can we decide which way we're gonna go until we have that information?
So that is one of the benefits of using MEMA, because they can have a design engineer here. Which then they could base the cost estimates on, and I'm honestly, I'm not pushing, I'm just saying. I mean, I'm not, like. I think that's, that is good, because I'm spent, Cameron's spent, Cameron doesn't even have a split second to call the E. Be honest with you, the amount of hours. I've put in. Is above and beyond anything I even committed to. So one of the options is. That right there, minimally put the application in and go for generators, just to get a feel for what it's like, put that in as a project. And or put it in as a whole project for either purpose or donate. Because it's gonna start the project, or you have to decide as a board, forget it. We don't have a staff, and that's the other thing. With this, with with Mima, you get thirty one dollars and eighty cents back volunteer time. FEMA, you get absolutely freaking none. Okay.
The information I need to make a decision is which will be most beneficial to the town. If you know that, tell me, and that's where I.
And what I, and so to me, having volunteer time paid. And us using that as in kind towards our twenty five percent that was over here. Versus over here, can't do it, that is huge.
So your recommendation is to go.
Mima.
Okay. Now, what about for Fonz Road that we've already done?
Okay, so with Fonz Road, because it's already back, and we've gone around this three times with them. The mitigation, the four oh six mitigation on that would be literally moving the road over. They're not sure if that falls under mitigation, that particular four oh six mitigation. They, the guy, Joe, Bachi, he needs. I don't need to slaughter his name, I really don't, I just don't know how to pronounce it, um. He's looking into some more information, but I don't have a lot of faith that that's gonna happen.
My, I mean, my understanding is honestly, we've already submitted the information on Fonz Road, P A will give it. To be put into it, seventy five percent of it. Honestly, that's a good project for four oh four mitigation later.
Right.
So we go FEMA. For Fonz Road and Mima.
So as of right now, I mean, technically all these projects are. They're they're identified for the P A process. If we end up going through, if we apply for Mima, and we get Mima, that's better option. We can drop that altogether. There's nothing saying you have to submit. For reimbursement under that, that's how I would say that. So if we decide there's a different option, we can drop the P A for darn it. And go to Mima, but in order to do that, we obviously can see next June, July. I mean, Viv's looking for the board's director, like, would you be open to consider applying for the Mima H M? Now.
Four oh one.
To see if we can even.
So. So another option is we could apply for Mima, and if we don't get it, or it isn't what we think. We should do, we can go back to FEMA?
Yeah, cuz the the damage is already been identified. I've signed off on it, it's in the P A application that we've submitted. We have till June or July sometime in that timeframe.
No, that's true.
Yeah, June or July. Before we have to file an extension, so we can go through the process of Mima, figure out if it's something we qualify for, or if it would make sense. The idea is Mima has engineers on staff that can come up, look at it and say. This is what you should do.
So we don't need to choose one now, we.
Well, it's whole process.
Go through the process and then we have to choose one.
Uh, three months, three years.
I mean, three years, three years.
Oh, you take up the three years to fix it.
So this right here could then be used to go back to FEMA. And in that eighteen month time, what Cameron just said, we could just do this. And go with this. If this is more financially and community and climate resilient and. Gonna save us money in the next five years. Does that make sense? Or we could use this design. To get these, to get the the assets.
So. Apply for.
FEMA.
Apply for Mima and then whichever way to go.
Plus Heather's willing to be a huge advocate. Uh, Heather, do this. Go back to Heather, break the case. Once we go with Mima, we no longer deal with FEMA, Heather deals with FEMA. And it all goes through them and not us. Which is a huge benefit. They have all kinds of backup. If something happens to me tonight, Cameron tomorrow, this all just. Who's gonna do it?
I'm moving up north.
Sixteen counties in Maine, which one floods the most?
I saw a trivia.
No, seriously, think about. Out of the entire state name, who floods the most? Guess what? Oxford County, can you believe that? I, that's statistics. We have so many open, I mean. It so, and then if you add climate change to that, and again, I'm not pushing for anything, but the county's pushing. To upgrade their stuff, the state's pushing to upgrade their stuff, they all can't tell. This isn't about politics, it's not about.
Same thing, like, if we can apply for both, and let's do that. What I'm thinking about like with Fonz Road is. If we don't get to it within the next eight months, it will wash out again. So we might as well get the. Some money for the work we've already done, and then. Eight months from now, when it washes out again, then, because we wouldn't get to it before then anyway, now we can go to Mima and so that recovers anyway.
Yeah, you.
I I.
Thing with Mima is right now, we can have one project. Fonz Road, we can have one project for generator, we could have one project for all roads potentially, uh. We could put in for planning work, we could put in for assistance. Somebody could come in here and do the administration work.
So that's on me. I thought we had to choose between the twos. That we don't have to choose between the two, my thought would be. Let's apply for Mima. To get the information we need to make the decision. Is that?
So I don't.
What you think will be?
Sorry, I'm.
Vivian and I just don't wanna be in a. We, no. You know, in my office, making all these decisions and trying to like tear our hair out to do all this stuff, then then. I I don't know, I just.
Right.
Those are our options right now.
So if we apply for Mima, then we can move forward getting the information. And once we have the information as a group. With whatever input from community members. Decide which would be the most financially beneficial to the town.
So how about this? I I give a vote to Heather tomorrow, is if I can connect with her. And I say. The board, basically, you can run a workshop, they can't, they they can't make their decision, but. Leaning toward whatever the language is that's legal, leaning towards sending this application. And. The second thing would be, do, would you want? Would, could that be on the agenda for next, your very next meeting? For the for the approval, and in the meantime, we could keep working on filling out capital. And getting it in, and then the second other piece of that will be. Would it, do you want me to try to get her here to do a presentation or? Anything else? Because it's it's, whether it's FEMA or Mima, the paperwork, administering. And understanding is huge. And I know Cameron is not gonna have the time, she will everything, I will do the best I can. Like I did tonight, and maybe I'll show up in two weeks and say, I got a part of it wrong, I. It's always possible. I've been wrong before, I've been wrong many times before. But but we can't keep making these decisions, it has to come from the board.
I I don't know if the board has to vote on applying.
Well, I mean, we kind of do have the management faults now, so I mean, this kind of constitutes grand, so this is kind of.
But we have to vote to.
To vote on the final one.
Right, we have to vote to just say.
But to.
No, it says.
Because I don't have. Extended. Over.
Before it all's improved.
We have to approve the application, okay, okay.
They're supposed to present us with an overview of like the. Central cost implications and all that stuff, and then we say, is this something we wanna move forward with, or is this something we wanna throw out, so?
So we decide, we could potentially, the board could potentially. Vote. To apply, but that would not.
That does not mean.
We have to accept it. So.
Right now, so.
No, no, so if if we have it on the. We can ask that it be on the agenda for the next select board meeting.
And Jen is never made. Whenever.
I know.
Well, we know this is gonna be on the agenda, so that's all that matters, and.
And then, my final question. Is, I would like you to consider, and we'll talk about it then, we don't choose these seconds. I know Heather, you will do the computer hard, but if. Any of you have any time. To help in the office. On any of this, whether it's typing or research or anything, please let me know. Because it's really needed, I mean, seriously needed. There were certain stuff that Cameron and only Cameron could provide, but there's. A lot of this other stuff that we could get done, that helps Cameron. And then helps the board at the same time, so I'm.
Does it have to be done in this building, or is it something you could give me and I could type it somewhere else?
If I do that, anyplace.
So yeah, if I'm at home, I have a lot of time to take to research stuff.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out there, and thank you, and we're good to go, yeah? This was huge, very huge, thank you, okay, I know.
I was gonna say, sorry, I'm not here, but since we had posted as a workshop, and it wasn't specific, I just wanted to bring up, cuz you had asked me about it. The tax elevated. So you had a question, I figured now since it's already here, might as well try and explain it to you and everybody so they understand the.
So I've had some community members come to me, it's who have the absentee ballots. Asking, why is this question here, and why should I vote for it? And I didn't feel that I was able. To explain it, so if you could.
So, back in two thousand five, the state passed a law, L D one, which was uh, basically it. Restricted the growth of municipal spending. Uh, and the only way you could exceed that levy limit, which is determined by annual growth factor, so uh. Oh, it's it's not this. Measure of the new development occurring within the municipality ties with, basically, income growth for state. So, part of that. There's an L D one worksheet to determine if you've exceeded that limit or not, and during the budget process. It's really a moving target, right? Because if some articles fail, some pass, your numbers change, you don't really know. The best gauge that a town can use is. They fill out the worksheet to come up with uh, what their levy limit is for the year. Then you take the entire proposed budget, factor it all in, and come up with. If everything on the warrant were to pass for the local. Budget. Are we over or are we under? Uh, I've been updating it as we went through the process, I just finished it while you guys were all talking about that, uh. But currently, if everything in the budget that you push forward to the townspeople were to pass. We'd be a hundred and thirty four thousand, six hundred and eighty eight dollars and seventy five cents. Under the levy limit, so even though that question's there. You put it there just in case something, you know, you find a miscalculation or something, but uh. You're, we've got a huge buffer, we're not exceeding that levy limit, because our revenues paced our growth. And there is no real tax increase from the municipal side of things, so whether it passes or fails should have no implication on. The budget.
So when somebody, because I essentially, my response was, it's a procedural question. The budget we don't anticipate needing for municipal budget to raise it.
In your.
So we just say it's a procedural, and then when they say, well, then why is it even on there? Do we have to have it on there?
Current statute says we have to. However, else one can appeal, and next year that question will not appear.
So current main statute says it has to be there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Janet Hill signed the. This one on, well, in April. And then what happens is the new law doesn't take effect until ninety days until the legislature adjourns, which should happen adjourned yet, so. This time next year, when we go through the budget process, L D one won't even be a second, we'll start with municipalities.
So it's on there because we have to do it, that's why, okay, thank you. That was one question.
It all looks so lively.
And we set a date for the next workshop, because you said we need to have one?
Yeah.
You can agree on a date. And put it on calendar.
So that's. What about two select board meetings out? Because the next one we have, upcoming in early.
So the first meeting of the new fiscal year. July second.
Yeah, Tuesday, it would be Tuesday the second.
So it'd be to directly follow. The select board meeting. What are other people's names? And if for some reason that doesn't work out, then at the next select board meeting.
Works for me.
Does that work for you? Okay.
Right, she's here every select meeting.
I've been not assuming.
Really appreciate. Eight to this.
Yeah, we appreciate you. It's good for the town. Reimbursement is nice.
I definitely understand it's confusing.
I think part of it is, it's confusing because it's brand new to all of. So we're like all high and on the same information, it's almost like information overload for me sometimes. Oh. It's a lot to remember, first time around in Dan- Danfley, Oxford County, where management. Cassandra and stuff, and they help a lot now, states. Was better second front of normal.
All right. Workshop adjourned. Thank you very much. We covered some ground tonight, people. Well done.